It's a little old. I just found out that he got one too.
Dustin, are you ready?
I don't know anything about this, but I don't think.
Mary, are you ready?
Just so you know what's been.
Where? Recreate with care.
No return.
He started up.
No, don't worry about that.
Okay.
No return address. Like, kind of sporadically written.
That's weird. I didn't get anything like this. Oh, was this the newspaper article?
Oh, the newspaper article. It's just friends and family.
It's creepy.
Isn't it?
I'm sorry.
Like, to call this regular town. Bayfield Town Board meeting to order for Tuesday, July 4th, or, excuse me, March 4th, 2025. Roll call, please.
Trustee Nyberg.
Here.
Trustee Zazaro.
Here.
Trustee Hartz.
Here.
Trustee Katsos.
Here.
Trustee Moreland.
Here.
Trustee McLaurin.
Here.
And Mayor Ah.
Here. All rise for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Does the board have any conflicts of interest?
Yes. Two A.
No.
Yes, five A, and I think B.
It's gonna be a revolving door tonight.
Yep.
Any other conflicts?
Nope.
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 General public input for anything that's not on the agenda?
Hi, my name is Ed O'Rahal. I live at 151 South Laclada Road, Mobile Mesa Park, Mobile Home Park. And I'm just looking for some clarification on the increase on utilities, water, sewer, trash. Why some mobile home parks, their increase was nine dollars and forty-nine cents per unit, per month, where ours' increase was eighty-four dollars and eighty-four cents per unit, per month.
Yeah, we'll have to do some research and get back to you on it.
I mean, I can, I, I, I'll look into it.
Okay.
We don't know your individual.
I mean, I don't, yeah.
Situation, and so it's better that we have her information, what she can see of your actual account.
I, I would say, I mean, just off the top of my head, I would say that the increase, the difference in price is probably due to a difference of number of units.
Okay, can I clarify one thing there? Our mobile home park has fourteen units.
Correct.
And the unit complex that I was talking about has thirty-seven units.
That could be the difference.
Yeah, I, I mean, I can, I can look into it.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I can compare the mobile home parks and look into it.
How do I get in touch with you, or?
Just, uh, um, I can, my name is Kathy, Kathy, oh, there you go. Yes, my card.
You had your card?
Dustin to the rescue.
Ask him out.
Car holder, huh?
Yeah, so just give me a call sometime tomorrow, you know, give me a couple hours first thing in the morning to compare, and then give me a call.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
If, make sure your contact information's on the back, back there.
Okay.
The list.
She'll be able to get ahold of you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
They've got a list, too, there on the, FYI.
They what?
They have a list where you sign your name on it.
Yeah, I know. I just told him to put his name on it.
No, 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 on the podium where they come up, FYI.
Hi, Brad.
Hi, how are you all?
Good, how are you?
Thank you, Brad Blake with Pine River Commons. Thanks to the board tonight. Last meeting, there was some discussion on the intersection. Obviously, Pine River Commons is interested in the intersection. And I did want to just mention a couple of things about the intersection. As a county commissioner, we made pretty big decisions a lot, and the one thing that really hurt projects was pushing them off too long, because the longer you push them out, the more expensive they get. And we built a lot of buildings. We tried to do it in a timely fashion. I can give you some examples on Pine River Commons. We were held up by two or three things, and we figured that six or eight months cost us three or four percent cost increase. So every, every day that you say, you know, well, pushing it off won't hurt, it, it really does, because it's a cost increase overall. And that's, that's just the way things seem to go. We're looking at a big cost increase in power this year in just various things. So I just would relay that message that I do feel that even though they, it seems things are moving along fine, time is money. Thank you.
Thanks, Brad.
Thanks.
Reading once again, David Black, 606 Buck Island. I was really grateful yesterday to see such a good turnout from our community and support of our federal workers. Obviously, we know that that's really, really important. I mean, federal dollars coming into this community probably account for a good deal of the transactions that go on here. With respect to what Brad just said, don't put this intersection decision off too long, because given what we see happening from the federal government at this juncture, there's no, there's, who knows whether we'll even see the money. I know that there's a couple of projects in the state of Colorado that won't get their money cut, Floyd Hill being one of them. Because I've already talked to the job superintendent on that, and he knows that since it's the premier projects in the state of Colorado, that all the money that it needs will be available anytime they need it. So, and then just looking to you there, Alexis Hartz. Why are you still here? Look at your post.
Any other public comment? Next up is approval of the agenda. Has the board had a chance to look over the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Nyberg.
Yes.
Trustee Zazaro.
Yes.
Trustee Hartz.
Yes.
Trustee Katsos.
Yes.
Trustee Moreland.
Yes.
Trustee McLaurin.
Yes.
And Mayor Ah.
Yes. Next up is the community grant request action, uh, action item. Pine River Senior Center Board. Guess you have to leave the room.
Bye.
Hello, my name is Carl Schultz, and I'm the, I live at 109 Spruce Way. I'm the president of the board at the Pine River Senior Center. And behind me is Terry Sandifer, who is also a board member, and all these gray-haired people here are also board members. And we are here today in support of our application for the community grant to finish out the information center that Terry and other people have been working on for the seniors. We have, in the past, polled everybody through a survey to see if they wanted it and what they wanted, and they are all, all, well, very much in favor of a information center. Basically, what it would be, would be a computer, a notebook computer, which we have already received. And it would use, would be able to search that computer to get information for people on, on things such as possibly the social security things, other information that they, a lot of the people we have down there don't have computers. And we do have some, Terry helps a lot of people out. So it would be able to get them access to stuff that is online that they don't have. What we would also use it for is to.
I'm sorry.
The information center.
I, I hate to interrupt you, but can somebody help Alexis, and then can we close the door?
We had to close the door.
Oh, sorry.
No, 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 you're okay. You, you were fine.
Oh.
She was just trying to flag someone.
Oh, okay. So, um, but we would also use it as a, for memory boards when members of the senior centers, from the senior center pass on. A lot of times, we will have a memorial service for them there. And this is a way of digitizing all of those photographs and getting them up in front of everybody at one time. So, like I said, we're here in support of that application. Terry has been doing a lot of the work on the technical side of it and could answer any questions that anybody has.
I'm, I'm curious, the request is for a thousand dollars for a big screen TV.
Yes.
And why do you want the TV?
That's a great question. The TV, seventy-five inch TV will be centrally mounted. We'll be purchasing the TV and a wall mount. That, the TV will be connected to our laptop, and we will stream a. I'm sorry.
Take your time, it's okay.
We'll, we'll stream a slideshow. And in that slideshow, we'll be taking pictures and, and we're going to project uplifting photos of the crowd, right? So that psychologically will elevate the spirits of the seniors, right? And so also, it will entertain us, it'll educate us, and it'll inform, we'll use it to inform, right? The slideshow functions will be the photos, we'll be posting senior center and community announcements, menu plans, social security and Medicare updates, scan alerts. And as Carl indicated, at some unfortunate point, we'll be, have memorials, utilize it for memorial services. And, and something, here's a side note that the town may be interested in. With that great big centered, big screen TV, you can also project PowerPoint presentations and YouTube presentations. So the town could utilize that if sold properly as, to enhance the revenue source that the senior center generates through rents, right? So, did I answer your question?
Yes, you did.
I thought you were gonna say bingo. It'd make a great bingo board, wouldn't it? I'm just saying.
And there's other things that we utilize the computer for, but all in all, it, it'll lift the spirits of everyone there.
That thing will be mounted, right, I don't know if you're familiar with that down there, right? Mounted to the right of the, the serving area for the meals. So it's very centrally located, and everybody who is eating at that time will be able to.
Got it. So you're gonna use it more like a tool?
A tool?
A tool, yeah.
Absolutely.
I, I worked for the Archuleta Senior Center back in the early 2000s, and we did not use TVs because they tended to be used for just watching TV, and the senior center was more for engagement and experiences and that sort of thing, so.
This one will not be hooked up to any.
Very good.
Broadcast provider.
Got it.
Internet or any.
Yeah. No, I understand.
Whatever. It's all just gonna be, basically, it's serving as a very large monitor for the information system that they're developing.
I gotcha. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, thanks. Thank you for answering my questions.
Does the board have any other questions?
Oh, sorry.
It's all right.
I don't.
I don't.
I think this is a great idea, guys.
Yeah.
I do, too.
I was down, talked to Terry before about it, and it was, yeah. It'd be a big asset for the senior center.
Well, next time I come and you're watching Netflix.
Yeah.
I see you five. I know all of your faces.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Pine River Senior Center request for a thousand dollar grant for a television.
I'll second. Raised you to it.
You got that, Dustin?
Yep.
You got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Is there any public comment? Roll call, please.
Trustee Nyberg.
Yes.
Trustee Zazaro.
Yes.
Trustee Katsos.
Yes.
Trustee Moreland.
Yes.
Trustee McLaurin.
Yes.
And Mayor Ah.
Yes.
Yay.
Next up is approval of the minutes and department reports. Looking for approval, has the board had a chance to look over the minutes from February 18th, 2025?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of February 18th, 2025.
I'll second.
That's great.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Trustee Nyberg.
Yes.
Trustee Zazaro.
Yes.
Trustee Hartz.
Yes.
Trustee Katsos.
Yes.
Trustee Moreland.
Yes.
Trustee McLaurin.
Yes.
And Mayor Ah.
Yes. Next is the attendance for the work session from February 18th of 2025.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the attendance as written by Dustin Hayden, town clerk, in our packet as correct.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Nyberg.
I abstain.
Trustee Zazaro.
Yes.
Trustee Hartz.
Yes.
Trustee Katsos.
Yes.
Trustee Moreland.
Yes.
Trustee McLaurin.
I abstain.
And Mayor Ah.
Yes. Next is the town manager report.
Okay, the, um, I had a day or two over the last two weeks. It was quiet. It wasn't, it wasn't busy. It just was quiet. Walked outside, it was quiet. But today was not that day. Today, we, you know, I probably had about fifty emails, and some of that was back and forth, but it was enough to keep me busy with, with that, let alone the other things I wanted to try to get accomplished. But trying to hit some points here, the, you know, we're concerned about the freeze on federal funds, and I try to keep up on it, but in the last couple of days, I tried calling Shaq and Sarah Tober and Bridget at CDOT, different people, but I couldn't get any answer. I think everybody's busy. But there is a Zoom meeting from Hickon Looper on Thursday, March 6th, at 2:00 PM that I'll attend, and then get some more information and, and pass that along to you in some memo or something, some email. But I, I wanted to have that for tonight, but I wasn't able to get any answers from anybody. So actually, the fact that there hasn't been any news probably hasn't been any change. We're, we're still on hold with it, so that's what I took from that. The, probably keeping on the funding research, I jumped down a little bit. I've done a lot of research to try to find, get ideas, get creative with funding possibly for the East Interchange, and I contacted Patrick at DOLA, Shirley Diaz with his, also with DOLA, Sarah Tober and Eva Henson. I met with them in Durango. They are going to meet with, or I'm gonna meet with them and Jennifer Allison at CDOT to ask some questions about the East Intersection that we, we came up with when we met together on, in Durango. And then I also had discussions with Bridget and then this person at USDA, Amelia Yaco. And I've gotten information from all of them. I need to go through it and probably call them back, but it's, it's, you know, it's gonna be creative, and we're gonna have to cross our fingers that the feds unfreeze the funds that are out there. And as I said before, I think we stand a good chance to see those kind of funds come out, because I think President Trump probably, if he's gonna put money out at all, it's going to be for hard assets, for infrastructure, that kind of thing, rather than social programs. So that's the silver lining, I guess, on that, on that cloud. So done a bit of that, the, and then specifically talked with Shirley Diaz with DOLA on Senate nights. Things are going well with that, with the staff there. We're all pleased how that's moving along. Then the mayor and I met with the school officials, and that's, you know, Leon Hanhart and Bill Hesper and Rebecca Parnell, and to go over the issue of the road that goes north of the intersection. And we didn't, you know, I didn't understand, oh, there's like five options, and so I had met with the engineer in Durango and got, you know, actual, you know, the plaques, et cetera, some of this engineering work, and then we sat down with them. And there, it's, um, option five that they're interested in, because it uses the least amount of land that they have.
Option one.
Was it option one?
Yes. Five was the other alter, five was the one that went through the two lots at the end of Oak.
I was gonna say, five, really?
No, it was one that went, okay. I already proved it, so it's too bad. I screwed up, I'm sorry.
It was option, it was option one. One, they said one or as an alternative five.
The one that goes between two houses and goes into the subdivision is the one that they prefer, because it uses the least amount of, of land in all the different options, which I can see can be a problem for the subdivision, because you're dumping a lot of, a lot of traffic in there, and then possibly if you had to buy the property, that's, so that's the counter issue, I guess, that's out there. However, you know, the, the other option is really pretty much put a more efficient curve to it and avoid those houses and avoids the subdivision, et cetera, et cetera. Now, given the fact that the East Interchange itself is the project we need to stay focused on, the final decision on what we want to do with the school district is not time sensitive. We don't have to rush on it. And so, because it'll be years after East Intersection is done, that we probably will then be pushing forward for the school project. But we did meet with them, and I think at, at the mayor's request, we went over to talk with him, and I think made them more satisfied with where things are at. At least they know they've had communications with the town officials and reiterated these things before the superintendent leaves, so, because he has historical knowledge about how it all got pulled together. So anyway, we did that, and I think that went over real well. The, we are interviewing for the community development director in the next week or two. We've got four or five people on that. The additional, let's see. Uh, I would've kind of covered that. I don't even believe that. I did talk to that USDA person about the stormwater funding, which we started looking into last fall, and then that dropped off. And she actually had, or kind of remembering exactly where things were at, so she sent me some information on that. And I will get back with her and talk to her about any potential funding we can get from USDA for stormwater funding. There's also Colorado Water Conservation Board, and I'm kind of wondering, there's, they've got different grants, but they deal with water, you know? And possibly, maybe there's some issue out there with the stormwater that we could blend into some kind of grant. So I'm looking at CWCB grants as well. We're gonna get the upstairs ready for the town manager and community development director, the workspace. The thing is, we can't get carpeting in there till the first part of May, and that's too late. We need to get in there. At least the community development director needs, needs a place to be, and I'd like to get a spot where it can stretch out a little bit. So we're gonna try to get that adapted and over the next week or so, and get us back up there, which would be good. The town does have a claim against advanced fire concerning town hall flood. That's something that I believe Michael has led through another firm to get file for, so see if we can be reimbursed for potential design failures in, in the fire suppression system. So we have one as well now, in addition to Surs's claim. We met today in, on the kind of kickoff meeting, Jeremy and I, on the water engineering projects, which we're putting on a screen. There's an emergency plan, there's a master plan. It's all in budget, but kickoff is today, and had a pretty good discussion on that. The Colorado Mountain Housing Coalition has an annual housing conference, and our officials that are on, like, yes, LPC, I believe it's Sarah Schwartz. Is Sarah Schwartz the same as Sarah Tober, or I mean?
No, so Sarah Schwartz is kind of like her assistant. She's just another person that works.
She's the president of this mountain housing coalition, and then there's also Shirley Diaz that's on that board. But this is something that Nicole probably would have gone to. I may not be here, but I wanted to bring it up as a potential, that if I am, I could go to it. And the convenient part is, it's gonna be at Mount Princeton in Lakewood, and get real close to my house. It's a couple miles down the road. And so it starts on a Sunday, and if I'm here and if you're interested in me going to that, I can. It wouldn't obviously cost me housing, and it wouldn't cost me miles, because I could be there and attend at least a day or whatever, something like that. We'll see how it goes. But let me know if you have any concern with that. But that's gonna be April 13th through the 15th. And ADA Access of Town Information, you know, there's states requiring everybody make your information and communication technology accessible to ADA. And I've tried to make a few calls to my staff and rifle that I worked with before, and been playing phone tag there. But I do have a meeting with Austin of Civic Plus, which is our, a group we work with. And I'm gonna see if they can help us with doing that kind of transition. So that's something I'm actively working on as well. I've covered most of these without jumping out too much, and that's all I have.
Can you tell me the name of that housing thing that you were talking about again?
It's the Colorado Mountain Housing Coalition Annual Housing Conference. Colorado Mountain Housing Coalition. And, um, so. I gotta double check it. I just, I've got an email today, and I.
Do you think maybe you could forward it to me? Would you forward it to me?
Yeah, I can do that.
Thank you. I'm invested in housing in our area, so.
Does the board have any other questions?
I guess I do. How's the sludge and garbage, garbage coming along? Because we have to revisit that budget item, so maybe just an update on that.
Oh, Jeremy talking about sticky issues?
Sticky issues.
Yeah, so the residential trash is, we really haven't had any complaints other than a couple of old trash cans still here, and then some that didn't get dropped off. But as far as that goes, I believe Reliable Waste is just doing a pretty good job. We've had a few hiccups with waste management, with the pickup and roll off, the size of the container for the roll off, and then some communication issues as far as for scheduling, trying to get caught up after the holidays. So it's been a little bit of a rocky start. Actually, tomorrow will be the second pickup, and then they're supposed to have us the appropriate sized container. We'll see how that goes. But yeah, it's been a little bit challenging over the first few months with, with waste management, so.
So when that load dumped over, did they reimburse us, or how did they deal with that?
The haul charge is the haul charge, so if they drive a dumpster to Bonded Landfill, dump it and bring it back, that's what waste management gets paid for. So that's that five, four hundred and fifteen, four hundred and something dollars that's for the haul charge. We get billed by Republic Services independently for the tonnage for the bio solids charge that's going there as well. So if it's nine tons, we get charged for nine tons. If it's twelve, we get charged for twelve. The thing is, is if we're not hauling full loads to Republic, our loads, our haul charges start to double, and so we get charged more for them transporting the waste back and forth. So we've been trying to be pretty cognizant of getting twelve tons in. That's our maximum, that we're allowed to haul safely. With some of the spillage that they've had in the bay with the sludge, we've had some eight-ton, nine-ton hauls, so three of those adds up to an extra load. So we've been in conversation with waste management as well. We'll see how it goes Wednesday, and if we're still continuing with some of the, I guess, some of the challenges that we're facing. I guess, some of the challenges that we're facing right now. But may, maybe time to think about moving on from waste management. I, I don't know. So they've, they've had, they've had more of five weeks to try and get this figured out, and every load has been problematic.
I appreciate that, that's why I was just asking.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions?
I'm curious with the school road. Since it, since it sounds like option one would go through a subdivision with housing versus another one that would not, would it be, would it behoove us to do an early community compatibility meeting to talk about that? Because I don't know if you want to get too far down the road. Now you've got residents that are pretty unhappy about the choice that the school's made. So I'm just wondering about putting the cart before the horse, so.
I think that if we were making decisions right away, we'd wanna get on that and do that exactly. But we're not. We should put people's minds to rest that we haven't picked an option yet. And what I was trying to get at is that we're gonna put all our efforts into the East Intersection, and that road will have to come, you know, it would be a couple of years down the road before we really start looking at that issue. Now, in addition, they said that they're going to create a fleet maintenance facility kind of close to where these, this work would be. And they're also going to try to, I think it was a parking lot over by the, is it the middle school?
I don't, I get their schools mixed up.
Yeah, the field to the north, I'm gonna put it that way.
Yeah.
And so those can affect the whole discussion and decision-making on where to put this. But I agree that we definitely want to have a, you definitely want to have a discussion with the community so that they understand it and understand what limitations and what's might end up being the best route, so. But right now, I don't, I don't think you wanna, or need to stir up anything more.
Yeah, good, okay.
Than what we have to try to solve. We've got problems we gotta solve.
Okay.
Derek McCoy. I was involved in, in that alternative analysis and everything. There were three public meetings held with, with that neighborhood group. Nicole noticed and everything, so, just so you know. And I think the alternative one is, is an alternative that the school might like because it doesn't require acquisition of real estate or condemnation, namely. The town, town of Bayfield's really always resisted the condemnation idea. So anyway, just so you know, there, there was a series of three public meetings that resulted in those, the selection of, from those five alternatives, so. And I'm sure that's part of Nicole's record and everything.
Yeah, it seems like I remember that too. Any other questions? Comments?
Parks and Trails Director Report.
Good evening, Board, Mayor. Month of February, Parks has performed normal duties. Did get to move some snow, that was fun. We've done some more fire mitigation along roadside in Little Pine Park. We basically got all along the highway cleared out, which is good. We do still have a lot more to do on the south side, though. We're gonna try to just get up to the property lines and, and clear out as much stuff as we can there because there's a lot of overgrown shrubbery and, and trees in that area. We were finished with all of our maintenance. We did do some, some other things, like some transmission flushes. We put some new tires on some of our vehicles and equipment. We had to do a radiator on the Colorado. Just little things that, that were needing to be done. We did some modification to the dump trailer that we purchased a couple of years ago, the manufacturer. When I bought it, I didn't really notice it, but you weren't able to remove the extended sides without taking the tarp cover off. So we modified that because it's nice, especially with like our Bobcat, it doesn't have a very high reach. So when we're just hauling dirt or gravel, you know, agri material, we can take those off, and it's easier and safer to load, so. But when we're hauling tree limbs or trash, we want that extra capacity. So we modified that to where those are easily removed, and our, our tarp is in front of that now, so we don't have to mess with that. Joe spent about a week formulating a sports field and park turf maintenance plan. This was based on some of the training that he took last year, we all took. Basically, what we're trying to do with this is utilize user fees through recreation a percent. And we'll be working with Dustin and DJ and looking at budget, trying to figure out what percentage of those fees that we can use to help maintain these fields. When you have that many people using these fields, the wear is a lot higher. I mean, around the soccer goals, you know, when they play flag football, there'll be spots where the grass is just completely diminished, just from all the foot traffic, so. Other municipalities are, are doing this. The training that we took, you know, this is one key thing that I got from that. So we'll be working with Dustin and DJ to kind of figure out a plan. It's not gonna happen this year, they didn't budget for any of this, you know, or, or, you know, look at, to see if they need to raise user fees or, or how we're gonna do this. But I think in, in order for us to keep these fields up to par for the kids and keep them safe and looking nice for the community, this would be a good, good step forward for the town of Bayfield. So we'll be working on that. We're gonna actually meet with these guys next week and, and start putting this together. We replaced some equipment on the Joe Stevenson Park a while back. I don't know if somebody stuck a pipe or, you know, something in these trapeze bars and just completely ripped them off of the playground. It took some heavy doing to do it because they were, you know, bolted on with hardware. But those were ripped off, so we, we purchased some new ones and replaced them with some more rigid hardware, and hopefully that doesn't happen again. Because those, those have been off for a while. We just had a hard time getting that playground so old, finding that same equipment to replace it with, so. But that is done. Yeah, we had a sewer backup last week in the shop, which was not nice. We've had some issues. It's mainly more the lift station and not our sewer line in the past, so I thought maybe it was that. But it actually turned out when Clear Networks did their excavation where their excavator struck our sewer line in multiple places. They, and, and the guy, he dug all the way up to the shop, he dug up to the senior center. But they dug it, they had to know they broke it, they laid their conduit, and then they buried it. Which would've saved the town, you know, a lot of time, money, them money now, just to report it. We could've fixed it, and it wouldn't have been that big a deal. But we'd have him and our plumbing come out. They cleared all the rock and dirt debris out of the sewer line, stuck a camera down there, and I actually watched him do it, and it showed the breaks in the line on the camera. It was a pretty cool system, actually. So he actually pinpointed that spot, so we didn't have to exploratory dig. We just dug right there, and that's, that's where it was. So we are being reimbursed for the plumbing bill and the costs of the parts to do that. So that is, that is good, that Clear Networks is gonna do good on that. Yeah, the other thing, and this is something I've been kind of bringing back, is we are still experiencing vandalism and reckless driving in Joe Stevenson Park. Chief and I have, and Sergeant Stritzel have worked together closely, I've taken photos. The problem that we're having is when these kids are doing it, it's either dark and we can't see, or, you know, we catch them doing it and they flee, and these guys have to go try to find them. I actually had an older guy that was walking his dog, and I was there Saturday finishing payroll, and I actually had to grab the guy and pull him out of the road, or the kid probably would've ran him over. But he just sped right past us, and I called that in, and Dustin had one of his officers try to contact, but I don't think they were able to locate him, so. My thoughts are, you know, I kind of see, you know, who comes to the park, what they're doing. You know, we have a few people that park down there that walk their dogs or fish the river. But it's being more utilized as a, as a high school hangout, in my perspective, from what I see. I mean, I've tried, we, we got cameras positioned to where, and Chief was actually able to locate a truck that was driving recklessly, trying to drive over our barriers and actually even down into the river. And they were able to contact him because we caught him on camera, and I was able to give that feed to Chief, which is great. But my thoughts are, and I kind of wanted to see what your, your thoughts, the board's thoughts, is putting up a fence and a double gate and having pedestrian access from the rodeo grounds. You know, people can still park, you know, we have the overflow parking next to the senior center. We have, you know, parking around the shop and walk to these areas. That gives us, you know, a little more control over the situation. When we want to open the gates up for sports, for, you know, the rodeo, the rodeo ground association is totally upboard because they've, like, they've got way more vandalism problems than we've had. I mean, they, they knocked down one of their buildings completely. But that would give us control when we're having these issues. Close these gates, and the public can still, you know, access, you know, on foot. That is the only way that I can see, you know, for this, you know, because we've gone to the schools, we've talked to the kids, I've talked to the kids. You know, I was a high school kid at one time, you know, I did some stupid stuff. But, you know, we've kind of given them the benefit of the doubt, and it just keeps happening. You know, and for me, like, I feel like our community would be better served to enjoy the parks, the nature, you know, without this kind of stuff going on. I don't think it's something that's needed. So this is my idea. It would be something that I don't think would be, you know, too much of cost, and we can do it in-house. It'd be an easy project for us. But I, I just want to run by you before we move any forward and kind of see what your guys' thoughts on it.
So one of the gates would go where you pull into the park and maintenance shop?
Right.
On that side of the rodeo?
And that would have to go on the, on the west side of that because we don't want to be opening two gates to get into our, to our shop.
Okay, and then on the-
And then there's already kind of a gate that comes off of the rodeo grounds where you drive to go around to the skate park.
Okay, that's the one I want to ask about.
Right.
Because is that on rodeo ground, or is that on school district down?
It's both.
Well, the school district owns, and the rodeo grounds are-
Right.
On top of it, but that's not town.
It's not, you know. So this would be something that we would partner, and I've already talked to Kyle, and he's totally on board with it. Because like I said, they've dealt with a lot of, a lot of stuff. So the road, as far as I know, is ours. The arena is theirs. So it, it would be kind of a small-
The road behind the arena is ours?
Yes. Really, their property is, is basically the arena, and then the road that's on the backside of the arena is theirs.
Yeah.
From my understanding.
Well, it seems to me that if you don't implement a solution, we're just gonna get more of the same.
It's not gonna stop.
And I think that there, there is a cost to it. I mean, I'm sure that they're tearing up the road, they're tearing up the, the ground area, and then you've got to repair that, so.
Frankly, we don't have time for that. I don't have time to look at cameras, you know. I don't have time to be calling these guys and taking pictures and sending it to them, or, you know, going out and grading out all the ruts, or picking up their garbage, or clearing off spray paint. You know, it, it's just a kind of a pain in our backs, so.
Well, why don't you get a cost together for some gates and bring it to us, and-
Okay.
We'll have that discussion further.
Okay.
Yep.
Mark, could you, I'm like looking at Google Maps right now. Could you just include where, when you bring it back, where you're proposing?
Right, a little site climate.
Yeah, that, that'd be really, it would be helpful.
Yep, I can definitely do that. Yep, another of that, that's all I got unless you guys have any other questions.
When, when you bring it back, can you also maybe talk to the rodeo grounds and see what contribution they would be willing to do to, and bring that with it?
We'll see.
If, if anything.
I mean, just based on the past, we really haven't got much from them in that aspect, but yes, I would-
They're protecting their equipment too.
Yeah.
And their, and their infrastructure.
Right, I agree. So we'll see, yeah. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Uh, I just had one. You put deeply digital on here, and then you said Clear Networks, are they-
Yeah, so I'm kind of confused, the- And I'm Jeremy, Mike-
Same thing.
Same company.
Okay.
So they, the project manager, her contact was through deeply digital. The service that we're getting, I guess, is Clear Networks, but it's the same, same thing.
All right. Yeah, I was just kind of confused because I saw that, so I was wondering.
Right. I was confused too. I was like, I've never even heard of deeply digital, but yeah.
All right, thank you, sir.
Yep.
Any other questions? Financial eject- Man, I can't talk. Financial action agenda, February twenty twenty-five expenditures?
I did, I had one question when I was reviewing it. So the fifty-two thousand dollars for the sprinkler system issue and the water mitigation, that, that amount is something that we have submitted for insurance reimbursement, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Looking for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept February twenty twenty-five expenditures.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Nybert.
Yes.
Trustee Cesar.
Yes.
Trustee Hartz.
Yes.
Trustee Katzus.
Yes.
Trustee Moreland.
Yes.
Trustee McLaren.
Yes.
And Mayor Ah.
Yes. Next up is the town hall fire suppression system. Your name's on it.
Yeah, we, we wanted to put this on the agenda and have a brief conversation. I did attach the third-party inspection drawings from Cooper Fire, and I know digitally they were a little bit hard to see.
Yeah.
But really, the best illustration of what that twenty-three thousand dollar and change correction quote was for is on page two. So page two of those drawings really kind of goes over the corrections that, that they're suggesting that we make. So if you notice on the bottom, there's a legend. Green's the correct sloping pipe, orange is flat or no slope, and then red is basically the corrections that they're gonna need to make. So on this drawing, what you're looking at basically to, well, my left-hand side is the police department boardroom, and then this is the upstairs portion of the dry fit system. All the red pipes are sloped in the wrong direction, which means that they can hold condensation over time. So those will need to be re-sloped. The green pipes are correct, and I want to draw your attention to the blue lines that are on here as well. So on the very first page of that attachment is that drum drip system. So that is how they're supposed to maintain the moisture in the dry barrels, the, the dry system that we have. We have one that's installed correctly. That's over in the custodian closet right here when you go to the restrooms, when you walk in. One is upstairs in the break room or the kitchen. It's installed horizontally instead of vertically. So my understanding is it will not remove the condensation. And then there's also one, I'm sorry, my computer's been on the fritz, I didn't get your correction in my memo, in the police station that is non-existent. So in that portion of the dry system, there's no way to maintain that condensation. So there's been one change of event since the memo came in. We were gonna ask for approval for the corrections, but we do have another third-party inspector that's asked us not to make any corrections until after the fourteenth. So I think that has something to do with the potentially sued against advanced fire litigation. So we are gonna hold off till after the fourteenth, let their inspector come in, look at these plans. But we'd really like to make these corrections before we put the ceiling tile, insulation, and all that stuff back in. But we'd really like to make these corrections before we put the ceiling tile insulation and all that stuff back in. So we just wanted to get in front of you and see what your thoughts are. This cost will be borne by the town. Insurance will not cover it. Potentially, if there is an award from the litigation, that might offset some of the costs. But we just wanted to know potentially your opinion on the repairs.
Well, it needs to be fixed. Don't want it to happen again.
I agree. I mean, it could happen all over again. We just need one storm to happen.
So, or non-storm. I, I was just curious, so if something were to happen that actually requires a fire suppression system right now, we do not have one, correct or incorrect?
No, we do.
We do.
So it is fully operational at this time. Um, Advance Fire came out, I think it was that second week after there, and made all the repairs to the sprinkler heads. So we're operational.
Okay.
So if we were to light something on fire right now, we, water would come out of the sprinklers, so we're not.
Okay, it's just the condensation and if it were to freeze again. Okay.
Yeah, otherwise per fire code, we'd have to have somebody on fire watch.
Yeah, that's what I, thank you.
Yeah, so, um, but the system is operational right now. And, yeah, we're hoping to move forward with some of these repairs, but we do need to wait till after, it's the next Friday. The, the fourteenth, I believe, is when.
At ten AM.
When they were and, and let their people come through and do their inspection as well to, to look at it.
Couldn't we approve it tonight with the?
Caveat of?
Caveat that it's going to happen after the fourteenth.
Yeah. I'd like to get a decision so we can get in there quicker, we can get in quicker.
Okay.
And, and the police chief has held off on some expenditure that is going to allow us to maybe buffer our budget a little bit with this. And hopefully we'll get it.
Yeah, thank you, Chief.
But I could answer any questions if you guys had questions in regards to the system. I've learned a lot about fire suppression systems over the last few years.
More than you ever wanted to know.
Well, it's nice when you get on-the-job training that you don't have to travel for or pay registration for, right?
Right.
So we're looking for a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Town Hall Fire Suppression System in the amount of twenty-three thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars and eighty cents with the quote from Cooper Fire Protection Services and for work to not start until after the fourteenth.
I'll second that. Thank you.
Should we? Wait, should we make that motion to, for the work not to start until after?
I think we'll just use that, our administrative discretion to do that.
Okay, I was just clarifying.
Thank you.
Okay, I got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Nyberg.
Yes.
Trustee Zizaro.
Yes.
Trustee Hartz.
Yes.
Trustee Katzos.
Yes.
Trustee Moreland.
Yes.
Trustee McLaren.
Yes.
And Mayor Ah.
Yes. I guess you're still up. Public Works Water Meter Purchase Request for seventy-four thousand six hundred and ninety-two dollars.
Yep, this will be another two hundred meters. We started three years ago with a meter replacement program. We've been buying roughly two hundred to two hundred and fifty meters a year. This will be year number four and then we should be complete next year. So what we're looking at right now with the meters we replaced, the fifth-year bill's going to be a little bit less than the seventy-five thousand that we allotted for the five-year replacement.
Okay. I'm sure you'll find a way to spend that savings.
If I look. So, um, once we get done in year five, we should be in really good shape for another seven to eight years after that. And then we're running into that ten-to-twelve-year window where the batteries start dying in the meters. That's, that's what's happening right now. We just decided to do it over a five-year period instead of having a giant capital outlay and then having all of the system die at once. So that's what we're experiencing now and then this way it gives us a buffer to be able to update those.
Smart.
Any questions from the board?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the Public Works Water Meter Purchase Request in the amount of seventy-four thousand six hundred and ninety-two dollars.
I'll second.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Nyberg.
Yes.
Trustee Zizaro.
Yes.
Trustee Hartz.
Yes.
Trustee Katzos.
Yes.
Trustee Moreland.
Yes.
Trustee McLaren.
Yes.
And Mayor Ah.
Yes. Next up is Little Pine Park Valet Toilet.
This has been a little bit of a project. So I've got, I've got three bids. Missoula Concrete came in the lowest. CXT and, and Romtech quite a bit higher than Missoula. Some of the stipulations, and I'm sure you guys seen this in their contract. The town would be responsible for doing all the excavation. They gave us a scope of work. I sent that out to bid. I think CRG and, um, I'll, one other excavator, I can't remember his name, but he bid higher. So CRG is the lowest bidder on that. I felt it would be good to hire that out, have somebody that knows what they're doing instead of trying, you know, to do that in-house because there's elevations and grades and stuff that has to be followed. And if that is not done to the specifications, when they bring this bathroom and the crane arrives, then we start incurring a lot of costs. So I've got that. We, we also have to pay for the crane. So, and I, the only crane that can do that is Eagle Crane in Drago. It's thirty thousand pounds is, is the heaviest lift on that. The local crane that we have here cannot lift that. I reached out to them. So Eagle would be the people that would be doing that. With all that, and I, I gave you a little adendum there. We're at eighty-seven, three twenty-five. That's also including what we need SGM to do for us. They, um, one, I asked them to do the site plan, um, you know, to make sure that we're putting it in our property boundaries. We're meeting all the regulations. And then she's going to do wetlands delineation. I have no idea what that is, but I'm assuming that that needs to be done. The survey and, and the site plan. Their cost on that through SGM is thirteen-eight. And overall, between excavation, um, the crane, the restroom, and SGM, we're at eighty-seven, three twenty-five. We have a hundred thousand dollars budgeted for this build. So that leaves us, you know, some wiggle room if, if anything. You know, even if the weather's bad that day, they're going to charge us, you know, for their downtime. So I, I, I lean towards CXT because with them, they take care of all that. And the town doesn't have that responsibility, but their prices are a lot higher than Missoula, so. And to have all this other stuff done by, you know, SGM, we would be over budget. So Missoula, I believe, is the vendor that we would want to go with. They outlined, it's a basic bathroom, um, you know, it has all the basic amenities. It does come with a solar-powered light and vent, so that's good. Instead of just a, you know, a natural light. And, and it lists everything in there that you need for this bathroom. All their conditions are, are out there. So I did, we do have to get a permit through the Health Department. An OWTPS permit for wastewater. That is kind of, that and, you know, whatever SGM is doing is the, kind of the only things that I'm waiting on. The only problem that I have with Missoula is their lead time. If we want this done, I'm already in the fall getting this done if we were to sign today with them. But until that permit is approved, and that's kind of a stipulation in this, I'm not going to issue, you know, any money or sign a contract. But I would like to get your guys' , you know, blessing on it. So I don't have to wait for another meeting. Once this rolls through, we can, we can get it going. But I've laid out all, all three vendors, all their, you know, costs and what they offer and, and everything in the report that, you know, we have to, to meet before we can have this done, so.
Mark, what do we budget for this?
It's a hundred thousand dollars.
Hundred thousand? Okay. So it's under budget? And did the eighty-seven, three twenty-five, did that include the five thousand dollar lock you wanted?
Um, that does not.
Okay, but you're still under budget.
Right, yeah. So this is something I, and that was one other thing that CXT did do that I liked too, is they installed this.
Pretty fancy lock.
Right, so until the, the structures here, I can't, I mean, I do have pricing on it. I've talked to John from A to Z. You know, I'm guessing maybe thirty-five hundred dollars to do something like that. We do have those at Joe Stevenson and Eagle and we love them because we have less vandalism and, and people in there, you know, in the wee hours of the night. So I do want that, especially with that location. But we're under budget, so we should have the money to do that.
Any other questions? What's the pleasure of the board?
So is that SGM is the final, it's kind of a little hard to tell which one was the end company, SGM?
Missoula Concrete is the vendor for the bathroom. SGM's the engineer that's helping us with a site plan and make sure that we follow all the relic, regulations required to do this build.
Yes, so there's concrete.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request for the Little Pine Park Valet Toilet with Missoula Concrete in the amount of eighty-seven thousand three hundred and twenty-five using SGM as the what did you call it?
Engineer.
Engineer, thank you.
I'll second.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Nyberg.
Yes.
Trustee Zizaro.
Yes.
Trustee Hartz.
Yes.
Trustee Katzos.
Yes.
Trustee Moreland.
Yes.
Trustee McLaren.
Yes.
And Mayor Ah.
Yes. Next up is the School Resource Officer MOU.
Yes, every year in Mar, or in February, I have to meet with the school superintendent and hash out the new contract for the following school year. So Leon and Met, I met beginning of February. We decided that the contract that's in place was worded the exact same way we wanted it. And so alls we did was change the dates and then I guess a signatory for the school. That was it. Uh, the financials are the same, the accountability is the same. Everything is the identical to the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. We just don't have it back from Mr. Goldman yet. It's under review. So once, we're just asking for your approval to sign it and forward it to the school board for their review as well.
So.
A motion, you know, pending the attorney's review.
Right, that's where I was going.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to accept the School Resource or approve, or whatever the right word is, the School Resource Officer MOU pending Attorney Goldman's review.
I'll second that.
Got it.
Man, we've got a lot of seconds.
We're seconding each other all over the place. I got a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Nyberg.
Yes.
Trustee Zizaro.
Yes.
Trustee Hartz.
Yes.
Trustee Katzos.
Yes.
Trustee McLaren.
Yes.
And Mayor Ah.
Yes. Next up is the SWDTF MOU.
That's the Southwest Drug Task Force. We currently have an agent with them. It's the exact same contract that it was last year and the wording hasn't been changed. It has been approved by Mr. Goldman's office. I did talk to Lou Carrington, the lieutenant for the county who is in charge of the unit, about federal funds being pooled or held off due to what's going on. He said they're fully funded for the twenty-five year. So everything's fine with the contract. The funds are all there and we'll be reimbursed accordingly.
There was a note about an unmarked car. Do you guys have one?
Yes, she has one.
Okay, great. Okay.
The last one had deer antlers in it. So we had to get her, we had to get her a different one. She hit a deer or the deer hit her.
Oh, got it. Okay.
Yeah, on that, the Microsoft program accepted all red lines, except it will not accept that one.
Really?
So I need to get ahold of Michael and see if he can fix that on his end because it accepted all the other ones.
Okay.
That one would not.
So it's really not an unmarked vehicle? It's a marked vehicle with antlers?
It's an, it's an unmarked vehicle. I just had a question.
The red line.
Uh, Michael's question was, do we actually issue her one? And yes, we do.
Yeah.
Any questions from the board?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the Southwest Drug Task Force General Memorandum of Understanding for twenty twenty-five.
I'll second.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Nyberg.
Yes.
Trustee Zizaro.
Yes.
Trustee Hartz.
Yes.
Trustee Katzos.
Yes.
Trustee Moreland.
Yes.
Trustee McLaren.
Yes.
And Mayor Ah.
Yes. Next up is the Board Reports. I just went to the, um, school meeting with Scott and other than that, I don't have much else that happened in the last, since the last meeting. Trustee Hartz.
No updates.
Trustee Katzos.
Uh, yeah, I got a monthly update report from the Region Nine Board of Directors. And Scott, you were saying that you were trying to speak to someone at DOLA. Tiffany at Region Nine attended the DOLA State Agency Federal Updating Funding Challenges Meeting. So you might want to reach out to Tiffany. Yep, Tiffany Lee. And then there were fifteen grant inquiries, one in Archuleta County, one in Cortez, four in La Plata, three in Monizuma, nine statewide. Also, Region Nine is working on training for the ADA applications. So we might want to pay close attention to what they've got going on when it comes to that. Also, Region Nine did the twenty twenty-four Enterprise Zone Annual Report for the state. They were really promoting the fact that we need that in our area, especially in La Plata County. But it's been really difficult because people either don't understand it or are not using it to their benefit. There's a ton of tax credits if you're in enterprise zone and you apply for that. So we'll see what happens when the state reviews our local report to determine if they're going to re-zone our enterprise zones or keep them the same. What else do I have for you? Let's see. Also, the next Region Nine meeting will be April twenty-fourth. And then I'll be tending, attending the Economic Alliance Meeting on March eleventh. Scott, if you'd like to join me, that would be great. I'd also like to know when we're going to reschedule the McKinstry Efficiency Decision Meeting. I'd like to get Lodger's Tax Workshop put on the agenda. And then also, I reached out to Sarah Tobler and included Brenna because she's involved with that. The Childcare Initiative Workshop for Funding. I'd like to set up a workshop where we could noodle ideas for funding, where we could contribute possibly to supporting that effort and initiative. So that's all I've got.
So are you requesting that the board put those things on the agenda?
Yep.
Well, then we need to have a discussion on each one of those.
Okay.
So if you want to bring them up one at a time, we can do a yea or nay.
Um, McKinstry Reschedule? Uh, the McKinstry, McKinstry, we, we were going to reschedule a follow-up because they were going to go because they were going to go away and bring back some answers to our questions that we had.
Right, that's dependent upon them and whether or not they got their answers right.
Right, but I just want to make sure that we get that put on the agenda.
But we're waiting.
We're waiting to hear from them.
Right.
Right, so we can't put it on the agenda. I don't want to say yea or nay because I don't know if they're ready yet.
Sure.
I mean, yes, I want it on the agenda, but if they're not ready.
They staff some information and then look over.
Oh, good, okay.
We had planned to bring it back, but we will now.
Okay, great, beautiful. Lodger's Tax, I'd like to do a workshop and understand the pros and cons and the benefits for our town.
I would be in favor of learning more.
Me too.
Do we want to do a whole workshop or just have a discussion at a meeting?
So wait, are you, you would like to learn more?
Yeah, so I mean, that could be something in a board packet that we review. It could be an email, it could be a workshop, it could be an extra meeting.
So wouldn't be anything open? I'm thinking more of an informational meeting, rather. Or workshop, whatever you want to call it, but including the not having part of the town board meeting.
Like on a different night?
Or for people that are specifically interested in that.
You mean like public, a public?
Public, yes, in public input.
Yeah. Well, maybe if we hear what, what it is for us and then we have something put together with the public if we decide we want to pursue it.
So I guess the question is, is do we want to have a discussion? Do we want to have someone present to us at a board meeting for an agenda item on the board? Or do we want a special meeting for this?
I think it could be done in thirty minutes, to be honest with you. It's not, there's not a ton. I mean, we talked about it before. We decided not to go with going for a vote for Lodger's Tax because we were trying to get the park approved. So, I mean, that was, that was a big reason why we didn't try to go after the Lodger's Tax right away was for that reason. But, so I think it's more, you know, that would be a conversation that we would have as well during that time. But I think as far as what can we do with Lodger's Tax? We could charge it or we can't. I mean, that, how much are you going to talk about it?
Well, yeah, but I think.
There's not going to be a lot to present, is basically what I'm saying. But there is a decision that needs to be made whether or not, do we want to pursue a sales tax for the park? Or do we want to pursue Lodger's Tax, both, you know?
And a Lodger's Tax is for people who come in and out of town.
Bless you.
And use our VRBOs and that sort of thing.
I understand that, but the people who have the lodging are the ones that may object to the Lodger's Tax.
Sure, sure.
That was, that was the whole preface in which one, or do you want to, how strategic about that do you want to be?
I just think that people are going to have a lot of questions. This board is going to have questions. So whatever that takes to be able to ask those questions and get answers. So thirty minutes, an hour?
Yeah, I'm not saying it's bad. I just don't think we need to have like some two-hour workshop or something like that, or a different night or anything.
Yeah, we could do it. We could do it prior to a meeting at like, you know, 5:15, start at 5:15, be done, that sort of thing.
I think if we skip it in somewhere when we have a small schedule, it'd be great.
Is this something where it's typically voted on by the public? Or is it something that can be added on by the town?
It's public.
It's public, okay.
Yeah, so it's going to be on the ballot.
Exactly.
Right. In which case then, we also needed to find what the tax is going to be for and put that on the ballot as well. So is there a, is there a consensus amongst the board to put it on, like have a, start an early meeting, like say at six or 5:30? Probably six, and have that discussion?
Well, I'm wondering, do we want to have a discussion that would be any tax measures that we'd want to be putting on the ballot? And is that something that we need to discuss now? Or were we waiting for more information to come back from the park group to make that decision? Like, can we talk about this holistically of all the ballot measures that we want that involve tax? So that we're not spinning our wheels, learning about Lodger's Tax, and then we end up doing the park? And then we got to do Lodger's Tax again some other time? Like, does that make sense?
Do we know it? When, when is the next ballot that? Because we want to do it in conjunction with the other ones that go on, so it's less expensive. Do we know when the next?
Be next November.
Not 2025 or 2026?
Twenty twenty-five. They'll do a coordinate election, twenty twenty-five.
We've been waiting for 2025 for the park tax.
Right.
Or ballot question, I should say.
Yeah, I, I think you're right, Trustee Zazaro, that we should have like a whole conversation on initiatives and not just Lodger's Tax, but, but also the park and everything like that, so.
How soon before the election do we have to know?
That's, well, I was going to say, I'll bring to the meeting, I'll bring all the timelines in for when Tabor and all that would have to be turned in, yeah.
And then maybe we can make decisions from that.
Why don't you bring us that information at the next meeting? And then we can have, we'll continue this discussion on what we want to do further. Please, sir.
You've got it.
And what else?
The Child Care Initiative, have a discussion about that. I don't know where Bayfield would find the funding, but I'd like to at least give the Economic Alliance and the Child Care Initiative Group an opportunity to come in and help us sort of kick some ideas on supporting that initiative. I know that there's a huge need in Bayfield, and so I don't want to not give its due to Bayfield and how we can also support that.
So I meet with them tomorrow? And maybe I can ask some further questions before we have them come back in?
That'd be great.
To see where they're at? Because I don't know if they're at that point of negotiating with the municipalities on what their needs might be. I don't think they're quite, they're quite there yet.
Yeah, I sent Sarah an email asking her what the timeline was.
Yeah, you gave, you see somebody on it.
Yeah, so I agree, that'd be great.
Let me find out tomorrow and then maybe bring it back at the next meeting and let you know what they said.
Okay, that sounds good.
Okay, sounds like we got that under control. Trustee McLaurin?
I wish I'd gotten this to you a little bit earlier if I'd been at the last meeting. But the La Plata County Food Systems Input Sessions are coming up. There are several of them this week. In fact, most of them this week in different locations. And what they're doing, they're, it's an open, they're going to be an open-house style engagement with, it's not formal programming or registration required, but you can come and go through the, they've got posters and displays and diagrams about how they're trying to integrate the food system in, in the county, well, actually for the whole Four Corners area. It's, it's very interesting. They did a lot of work with the Iowa State University Extension. They came through and helped them work on some of their plans. And they're trying to get some more input from the people. There are all kinds of needs that we have that they've looked at before, things like commercial kitchens, rental commercial kitchen spaces. Those are some of the ones I know, trainings, the things that we need to be able to develop our local food system. I've got copies of the dates, but I can tell you, well, tonight they're having a meeting over at Blue Spruce Campground. Here tomorrow, they have Fort Lewis College, Ennis Valley Grange, Mount Allison Grange, and they're all at different times. I've got them up here. If anybody would like to go, I'm going to try and get to some of them. And they're sort of, they spread them out because the needs are different in different parts of the county. So they've got all these other things. Pine River Shares is on Friday between 10:00 and 11:00 a.m. So that's one we could probably, a bunch of us could go to. Several of them are in the evening. But I've got them, the places they're going, St. Louis College, Ennis Valley Grange, Mount Allison, Green Community Building, and Pine River Shares.
If you want, you can give us a copy and we'll, we'll send it to everybody.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I've got some copies here, but.
I like his idea.
Yeah, yeah, I like his idea better, too.
It's his paper, it does not end up anywhere.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's got to be sent out. But it's, what was it? Oh, that's Blue Spruce, that's in Viacito. I wondered where that was. But anyway, yeah. It's, they're doing some good stuff. The Good Food Collective is sort of the head of this group, but they're also involved in a lot of other things, including the Child Care Initiative in Durango particularly. They started down there. And I thought they designated some of their Lodger's Tax to go towards childcare.
They did.
Yeah, so they've, they support that. They do a lot of work with that. We just have to really, the Good Food Collective, in my opinion, is a great organization. Rachel Landis is their leader on these. You'll find the contact information on here. The problem with them, I started working with them when I first moved here, we don't get enough representation. Bayfield and this part of the county just, they don't, it's different from Durango, and we just don't. Well, I don't know how much you know. Durango and Bayfield, a lot of times, don't get along. They don't like each other. But it's important for us to get out here because we're where the, you know, where they grow a lot of the food, okay? And food is very important. It's going to get more and more important as we, you know, all this stuff that's going on with support for farmers and all that kind of thing. So I'd like to see some of us get to some of these meetings. And I'm sure they'll have some more as they advance the thing. They're, they're working on a five-to-ten-year plan. So we'll have another chance for input. But we got to get the Bayfield and eastern people out in there.
Need to create some cottage industry here, based off of agriculture.
Yeah.
And then the interest of those in Durango are really good people.
Yeah, well, we got, I mean, there's all kinds of potential here. But we need to, you know, we get the support. They've got different support than we have, and it's just better to cooperate and help each other.
Anything else?
No, I don't think so. I'm curious about, oh, I did have one question. You know, we, we put in the agricultural zoning. Do, have people applied for that to be annexed into the town? I know you were talking about Mr. Black.
I haven't, did I, did I?
No, no formal applications at this time.
Oh, okay, just interest, yeah. That came about and was approved just as hell was breaking loose all through here. So, I mean, it's a little, it got probably a little lost in the transition, but that's a pretty cool thing, too.
Trustee Morland?
Yes, so I spoke to Andrew Clots today, and he had said that he wanted to come every first meeting of the month to give us an update. And he didn't come today because he's going to have more that he'll be able to talk about at our next meeting, and that's for the Cinnamon Heights project. I have not met with the La Plata Economic Development Alliance. That meeting is tomorrow. And the Regional Housing Alliance is the following Thursday. So that's all I have.
Trustee Nyberg?
Next Southwest TPR meeting is April 10th.
Didn't have a March one? How'd you luck out on that?
I don't know.
Trustee Zazaro?
I don't have anything because I've been out of town for the majority of the month of March. So hopefully I will have some updates after I attend some meetings.
And I did forget one thing. They, the school's having a meet and greet for potential school administrators on the 10th. If anyone would like to go to that. They asked at our meeting yesterday if we would at least mention that at our meeting and let people know if you want to know when, specific times and stuff, if you could check their website? Because I forgot to bring that paper with me. So I don't have the times in front of me, but I'm almost positive it's March 10th. And that's about it for that. And then we were going to move on for an executive session. Does someone want to read this?
All right.
Mr. Mayor, I move we go into executive session in accordance with CRS Section 24-72-2043AIX and CRS Section 24-6-402.3.5 and consideration of documentation, resumes, letters of reference, and other materials for conducting and discussion of a personnel matter under CRS Section 24-6-4022F and not involving any specific employees who have requested discussion of the matter in open session, any member of this body or any elected official, the appointment of any person to fill an office of this body or of an elected official, or personnel policies that do not require the discussion of matters personal to particular employees. Board consideration and discussion of five potential candidates for the town manager position.
And who do you want to include in the executive session?
And to be included in the executive session would be Trustees Nyberg, myself, Trustees Zazaro, Trustee Hartz, our Mayor Ah, Trustee Katsos, Trustee Morland, Trustee McLaurin, our interim town manager, Scott Hahn, our HR Director, Marie Kamm, Town Attorney, Lindsay Nicholson. Anyone else need to stay?
KRW Lynn.
And Lynn from KRW?
Through Zoom.
Through, via remote? Okay, so that's it? Okay, so, I mean, a motion?
Second.